Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of March 18th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and we'll move on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of justice for all.
Thank you. Can we just start by saying, it's so nice to see a bunch of people out there. So will you have a roll call for this, Mrs. Fr-
Sir, Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mrs. Mulan?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
And Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Please sign off all personal electronic devices during the meeting. Any motion to adopt the agenda is ready, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulan?
Yes. And we're going to start by welcoming the Koi Elementary Student Government tonight for their report on what's going on in Koi.
Where are you at today? Where are ya? Y'all on the right spots? All good? There we go, make sure. Girls, let's curve it around, because we always want to face our audience. Yep, keep coming back. Go all the way back, all the way back, keep going. Keep going. How you guys doing over there, okay? All right, move this over a little bit. First of all, I am Mrs. Koi. I am the Student Council Advisor, and these are a few of our Student Council representatives. So I would like them to introduce themselves, nice and clear.
My name is Kedall Klein.
My name is Cameron Brand.
My name is Olivia O'Brant.
My name is Nadine Aura.
My name is Darius Stewart.
My name is Audrey Tharp.
My name is Haley Shoffler.
My name is Hayley.
And so what we did this year is, since I was new to this, I kind of had an idea of how I wanted it to go. And I believe that in Student Council, that leaders are created, not necessarily God gifted. So, and everybody has different environments that they come by, so that's why I decided that, you know, we were not doing elections. So, but I had some parameters set about on how I wanted it to go. First of all, we had an application. And so both the student and the parent had to fill this out, and these were the expectations that we review at different meetings at different times. Number one, I will attend all scheduled meetings. Three unexcused offenses will result in being removed. Number two, I will act responsible at all meetings, activities, and events. Number three, I will not have any missing work from my teachers. Now, I did work with some teachers, because like I said, we're trying to grow these leaders. So we did work with that. Number four, I will try my best to demonstrate the E plus R equals O, event plus response equals outcome teachings. And that included our Koi Nest philosophy that we've been working this year, with being positive, disciplined, owning it, problem-solving, persevering, patience, courage, flexibility, and generosity. And number five was that I understand what good citizenship is, is a must. And we know that the group requires teamwork and collaboration with others. So some of these students, it was the first time, working with others for a common good, for the common good of everyone. The parent had assigned the parent and the student and the teacher, and I also had a parent spot, saying, what is your student good at? What would they like, Koi? Because those are our stakeholders, so that's pretty important. And then I also asked for the individual students, what are two changes that you would like? And what are two positive things that you have that you can give the school? So that was our application process. All right, so then I'll let Nadine explain how the meeting started.
So every time when we have a Student Council meeting, we go in and we grab our name tags, and there'd usually be something on the tables for us to sort, or anything to put together for teachers, just to get us a start into what to do in that time. And once we leave, we would easily put our name tags back on the board, and we'd go down to recess or to lunch, once again.
So what we do with the name tags is, I wanted to, move to the next one. I wanted to keep track of how many hours that they had volunteered throughout the year. And then I would like to give a certificate at the end stating their hours, because we know that as these kids get to high school, you know, they're going for that special certification under high school diploma. So I want them to get used to what this is like and so forth. So you see that some, I have one student over 10 hours, and you know, somewhere between six and seven hours. So I keep track of every time that they come in and so forth. It's really easy, okay? I'll go to the next one.
All right, outside our fourth grade classrooms, we have this board saying some upcoming dates for Student Council, and any important things coming up. Sometimes there, we have the dates of what Student Council is. I mean, like I said, any things coming up, or things that have happened in the past that Student Council has done.
And we also tied in the nests, and the different positive sayings with the nests.
The first thing was to write on a school's favorite day schedule. We mixed up items with the school and when they were in favor.
The first fundraiser was when we got our new therapy dump. For $1 or donation, you could wear a hat. We raised $350.
Next, we did a can drive. You could put your cans with Ohio State University or Michigan. Needless to say, Ohio State won, and we collected 569 units.
Miss Clayton had bookcases donated for those who wanted bookcases.
Our next big event was Veterans Day.
And eventually, we want to give the Purple Heart, which is a progression throughout the years.
At Veterans Day, we, all the fourth graders put flags outside. It was fun to have people drive past and honk at us in support.
And a lot of students were asking, why are they honking? I said, guys, they love this. They love that we're supporting our troop. So that was kind of a neat, a neat moment.
We began collecting veterans' items to display. Here is Marco Polishing, Mrs. Clayton's dad's army boots.
We took all name submissions and pictures, laminated, and cut them out.
We then hung all the veterans on the wall.
A special item was from Deshawn to grandpa, which was a Purple Heart.
We had several military uniforms, including the Spears husband, Air Force uniform.
We also had a Legion Auxiliary Uniforms slash Outfits worn by the veterans. We hung them up to support the veterans.
We worked with Miss Wheeler, our teacher, Miss Wheeler, and Drew Lashway, made this saluting, saluting of a saluting veteran to display for the week.
Here are the items on display.
And you'll see, we had Army bags, we have letters home, we had flags from militaries, funerals, so we're able to explain that and so forth.
Students wrote thank you letters to hand out.
We put all these items in a slideshow for all to see at the fourth grade assembly and in the classrooms. We had 341 views.
In the slideshow, we also included the list of students and teachers who had veteran parents.
Here we are at doing that everything assembly.
For Chance's birthday, we collected toys and donations for the Lucas County Hurry and Society. We collected $51.
We, throughout the year, have helped teachers with separating scholastic youth.
We helped teachers staple packages.
And what kid doesn't like to help their teachers? Especially past teachers they've had.
We helped kindergarten teachers sort and repackage unexcused kids.
We assembled voting boxes.
But unfortunately, it was decided to put on hold until the next election.
Yeah, we didn't need that controversy, but it turns you to go for the next time.
With time allowed, we participated in videos for the NASCAR event.
In April on the 22nd, we will collect thank you cards for Koi bus drivers. Some other things we will be collecting is candy bars, pop, and gift cards.
And, and they, fifth, three lives, we will be collecting for the teacher's grocery.
Student Council will also be helping with the book collections we sort according to grade level.
Any questions?
All right, thank you for your time.
Ladies, that was absolutely fantastic. I'm so impressed you did such a great job, and a great job for Koi School.
Thank you, ladies, that was awesome. You guys did a great job of presenting as well as speaking, so thank you very much for that presentation.
And moving on to staff and student community recognition. That's Dr. Fritz.
Well, tonight, we have a special recognition that I'm going to have. Why don't you come out up and we'll do this. Bring up the students.
I'm a little taller than the kid. Hello, everyone. My name is Megan Porter. I am the music teacher at Star Elementary School. And for the last 10 years or so, every year, I try to find some of my best singers, students that support our school, students that show model citizenship and behavior, and students that love singing. They love music. They are interested in what we do and the programs that we're running. And I ask those students every spring, hey, are you willing to give up recess? And most of the time, they're like, for what? But when I talk to them about the All-State Children's Choir, I talk to them about it being an opportunity, that it is something that we really strive for success at Star, and that it is something that I feel like they can do. I feel like the application process is rigorous. It's hard, but it's something that if they're willing to give up two or three recesses, and maybe a morning or two before school, they can practice at home, and they can go through that process with me, then they're going to have a really great experience. And so behind me, I have six amazing kids that were with me at Star last spring that gave the time, that absolutely gave the focus, and they were accepted to be part of a 123-member All-State Children's Choir this year in February, which, which is really incredible. I think sometimes we think of all-state groups and we think of high school. We think of, you know, athletic events. We don't necessarily think of young children. But the application process for this is rigorous. They have to be able to sing two completely different contrasting styles of song. They have to be able to do it unaccompanied, no piano, no help from me, and they have to be able to keep that, that steady beat. They have to be able to sing in tune. They have to be able to have light, clear voices, no, no radio singing is what I call it. And then they have to be selected from a review board that does not include myself or anybody else that I know. There are hundreds of people that apply for this every year. They only take about the top 100. So to have six in it, I am beyond proud of you guys. I am beyond proud. So I want to introduce, we have Ann Cunningham, who's a fifth grader this year at Eisenhower. We have Mila Coors, who is a fifth grader this year at Eisenhower. I have JT Sizmansky, who is a fourth grader, I said it wrong, I'm sorry, JT. He was a fourth grader at Star. I have Natalie Ubroth, who is a fifth grade at Eisenhower. I have Scarlett Wagner, who is a fourth grader at Star. And I have Ruth Chavez, who is a fourth grader at Star, and I am so proud of them. I have with me a certificate given by the board to show how fabulous you are and how much we appreciate all the hard work that you do. And again, we are so proud of you, and you guys did an amazing job, and you, you made a work I'm proud of. You did such a great job. Nice work.
Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
Stay within the green.
So Natalie, let's have you in the back, Ann in the back. Let's have JT there. Are you on it?
Don't go right in front of me, I'm tall.
Great job. It's been awesome. Congratulations.
And Natalie, it's your teacher proud of you. You've led so much of the board and the entire city of Oregon. You are wonderful. Thank you for taking the time to do that. Appreciate it. Mrs. Ruth, do you have any cards?
I have no cards.
Okay, thank you. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. Okay, the treasures report, please.
All right, very quickly forward. These are all upon our Google Docs, but the percentages for some of our receipts are a bit skewed, because we received our advances, our settlement, excuse me, for real estate taxes and tangible personal property taxes a month earlier. So we are not expecting a 21%, 27% increase in our revenues from last year, but I just, that's why it's coming in like that. One thing that, when you compare them, I was a little disappointed when I saw the estimates, how the estimate came in for tangible personal property taxes. And there's a late, there was a late, one of our utility companies was late on paying, and it's a considerable amount. And so the treasures in the area are asking that that be advanced, so we don't have to wait a whole half year to get those monies. We'll see what they can make available to us. If we got it all, it'd be $196,000, but it's, we probably won't fit that much, because on the other side, there are a lot of people challenging the real estate values. So we'll see what they have available to us. But this property tax number should change slightly. I just wanted you to be aware of that. Couple miscellaneous things. We did, in fact, the letters all went out for our property challenges for the commercial industrial values. Those all went out. As we discussed previously, it will require a special board meeting during the last week of March to complete the process. One of the motions on the board agenda today is to accept the amounts and rates for the budget commission. This is estimated receipts the Lucas Auditor's office comes up with for tax year '25, which, of course, we get based on 24 values. And of course, we get half of it from January to June '25. The rest will be July through December of next fiscal year. But that's what we're accepting, and it does not have the fees and homestead work back taken out. So it is up in the Google Docs as well. Another thing I had is the auxiliary fund. The $72,000 was what was left in, we are the fiscal agent for Cardinal Stritch's auxiliary funds, the two-year budget, the $72,000 was left up in their budget last year, and so it's getting transferred to be spent this year. It has to be spent out this year, I just wanted that clear. There is no need for a change in the appropriate nation measure at this time. Dr. Fritz had mentioned last meeting, we were going to be watching, just a brief, it was about 45-minute Zoom on what was being considered for, frankly, it was for utility revenues. And it was done by Becky Prince Horn, who is a very respected lawyer. And I just want you aware, nothing has happened yet in terms of, they haven't got the legislation passed, but a lot of it was about the Rover Pipeline, which does not impact us. But what could impact us is the push to review, to reduce the tax values taxable, or the valuation taxable for utility property. They want to take it from 88% taxable down to 25% taxable. Don't know if this will happen. Have Fleeter Educational Tax Policy Institute that we join. He's, I don't know, he's my hero. But he made a comment at the very end, and I think it's worth a broadcast here. Over the past 10 to 15 years, the local reliance on business and industrial taxes has gone from 54% to 30%. And of course, then that gets pushed down on the local residential tax payers. And then when we have this valuation situation we have this year, that just exacerbates it. So I just want you aware, our legislators need to, I mean, if the legislation truly believes that the businesses need this tax relief, then they need to, they need to fund, fully fund, the state fair, school funding formula. It's, it's a big deal. So I just want you aware that that's in the works. I don't want to be in my business ever, but something has to be in the process. So unless there are questions, that is my report tonight, this is.
Jane, I don't see the accepting rate for budget commission under your-
Oh, I think it was a separate motion, if I'm not mistaken, under new business.
Okay.
Excuse me, yeah. Yeah, first one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I guess I just always talk about it, so.
Okay, so we need a motion to fix up the treasures report, please.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call.
Hi, Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulan?
Yes. Anyone have a need for executive session? Okay, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Mulan?
Yes. We have several retirements here that make me happy for them and sad for us.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I mean, you mentioned that, and all of the years of service for these individuals. I just want to say thank you to them for service to the school district, you know, to the fellow staff members, to the communities, and especially the students. So I just want to say thank you for all of their work.
Okay, moving on to new business. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates is determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. We need a motion to approve this resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulan?
Yes. Item B, a resolution to adopt the special education model policies and procedures. Needing a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the special education model policies and procedures. The resolution has been distributed to the board. Any have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulan?
Yes. Item C, we have a resolution to re-employ the treasurer after retirement and approval of contract. The resolution and contract have been distributed to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sattick.
Yes.
Mr. Eversman.
Yes.
Mr. Zwizwinski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar.
Yes. Item D, Clay High School switching refresh bids were received for the Clay High School switching refresh to be paid from the general fund eligible for 60% reimbursement from E-Rate. The accepted bid was from N-Walka-N-B-E-C for $86,523.36. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? This has to do with computers. And roll call.
Mr. Sattick.
Yes.
Mr. Eversman.
Yes.
Mr. Zwizwinski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar.
Yes. Item E, a motion to approve a consultant service agreement with ImagineNet Photo Incorporated. The contract has been distributed to the board. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sattick.
Yes.
Mr. Eversman.
Yes.
Mr. Zwizwinski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar.
Yes. Item F, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. From the Sun Federal Credit Union, $100 to Coi Elementary for hygiene and toiletry-related items for families in need. May I have a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
With gratitude. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Jury and, okay, I apologize.
With Dan's gratitude in mind.
I got it, I got it in there, okay. Very good.
And any discussion? And then roll call.
Mr. Eversman.
Yes.
Mr. Sattick.
Yes.
Mr. Zwizwinski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar.
Yes. Item G, a motion to approve the following overnight trip from Clay High School, March 23rd through March 26th, 2026, to Nashville for students in the band. The cost of the trip will be paid by the families of the students. This was previously approved at the December meeting for different dates from March 30th to April 2nd. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sattick.
Yes.
Mr. Eversman.
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar.
Yes.
And Mr. Zwizwinski.
Yeah.
Item H, policies. The following policies are being presented for their first reading. A recommendation for adoption will be made in March. It should be able to be March. We have to have a special meeting because they have to be in our policy by April. So, we have to do that at a special meeting.
Is that the meeting that we will call for next Tuesday? Okay.
All right, yes, March 25th. Okay, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the February 18th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And Mr. Fritz, you're on.
Thank you. Let me write myself a real quick note. First, I want to say congratulations to Jennifer Colerick, who is here tonight with us, is being named the new Director of Special Education as we just approved that nomination, that recommendation. So, I want to congratulate her on that and, you know. So, Dee and her will be working over the summer a little bit and into September, or August and September, in those positions. And so, we will be posting the junior high principals' position tomorrow. And that will be, we have three principals' positions out there of the six buildings. And so, we continue to work on those. We continue to work on the 10 open certified positions that we have right now. So, there's a lot going on in personnel. And we do expect that we'll have some more postings coming up based on retirements and movement and so forth over the next month or two. And so, that's why we decided to tackle some of this very early because we knew it was going to be a lot of work. And I will, myself and Jeff Straka will be at the UT and Bowling Green State University education days to interview some new teachers there and see, you know, if we can get some of them to fill our positions. But we're seeing some, the number of applicants are starting to increase. That's good. And we're happy about that. And so, we're looking forward to bringing some recommendations to you in April for some of those positions. I do want to talk legislatively a little bit. As I shared with you back in January, I tried to keep you updated to some degree on what's going on in the State House. There's a number of legislative items since the last time we talked. Obviously, the state legislature is still going through the process. We do expect that the House version will be passed by April 9th. So, we're just a couple of weeks away from that. The Senate will complete their version by mid-May. And then you're going to have some conference committees and that work will be done. They'll take a final vote on all of that and add it to the governor's desk by June 30th. We're still trying to influence a lot of things related to that, whether it be the Fair School Funding Plan, especially in the governor's proposal since the last time we talked, you know, it was released and the analysis of it, and it's $103 million reduction over the next two years in his first proposal. That's not good for public schools across the state. I do want to mention one thing about that. We were talking about percentages and, you know, this proposal that was provided by the governor would drop the statewide average share from the state from 38.4% this school year, this fiscal year, to 35% in the next fiscal year and 32.2% in the following fiscal year. That would put us at just above Mississippi as the second lowest funding amount of a state to public schools in their state. So, that's not something we should be very proud of in the state of Ohio. And something's got to give, you know, with where we're funded, especially in light of the discussion about reducing real estate taxes. And we know that we're the, you know, when somebody gets their bill, we have the biggest amount on that bill as far as the local taxes for residents. And so, we understand that that could significantly affect us moving forward. So, we were very concerned about that. And those conversations are still going on at the State House. The one thing I want to kind of put on the radar of students and parents that came out of the governor's budget, which was interesting, and he's still pushing this, is that, you know, they all, they wanted us to have a policy on cell phones. We already had a policy on cell phones. I don't think you really even realized that, but we did. And so, now the push is you truly want cell phones banned during classroom instruction. I haven't seen anything specifically in the language, but some are saying it's going to be a ban during the day. So, don't worry about it. Some are saying it's going to be just during classroom time. So, those teachers wouldn't even have the option of using them if they wanted to as part of classroom instruction. So, you know, we'll see where that ends up going, you know. I think we do a pretty good job of monitoring that and dealing with that. But the governor obviously has a different feeling on that. So, we'll see where that goes. Ultimately, you know, we're diving into state assessments over the next month and month and a half or so. And we want to say, we wish, you know, we want to wish our staff and students the best in that process. I know that they've done a lot to prepare them for these one-time assessments. So, we want to, you know, say thank you for all that preparation, but also wish them the best in those state assessments. I do want to quickly mention, this last weekend, I had the opportunity to be at the alumni event down in Florida. About 60 or so people, mostly graduates from the 1960s and 1970s. But there was a gentleman there that was 100 years old from the class of 1942. And the youngest were from the class of 2004. A lot of great stories and it was good for me to hear those stories for the first time, you know, hearing these stories and hearing about, you know, decades of graduates and their experiences and how it's different now and things like that. So, that was good to hear as well as, you know, I think there's some opportunities where some people were interested in providing some donations to the school foundation. And that obviously goes back into the classrooms and the work that our teachers are doing each and every day with our students. And so, it was a good event and great to see those former graduates down there in Florida. So, that is my report for today.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Okay. Both business. My goodness reports longer than his was because there's so much good news.
There is.
Three reminders. Kindergarten registration is underway. Registration for Safety Town is also underway. And the craft show supporting Operation Graduation is this weekend, Saturday. At the three elementaries, the largest item for April will be, of course, as Dr. Fritz said, testing for third and fourth graders. They're tested on math and English language arts. Please check newsletters, prepare your children with good sleep and something wonderful to eat in the morning. Music programs are springing up in all three schools. So, check your calendars, your newsletters. Because, for instance, Coys will be Thursday, but it's held at Facet, so. Jerusalem's gifted and talented team of third graders placed third in the entire nation for the first three meets of the National Word Masters Competition. That's in the nation, that's wonderful. The outstanding results overall were attained by Addison Allen, a third grader from Jerusalem. And then from the fifth grade at Eisenhower, Grace Bickford also. She was a Jerusalem student. From Eisenhower, the fifth graders have their annual math night on April 3rd. Science night is on April 10th. Hoedown is on Friday. And tickets are available till tomorrow, correct? Okay. And Kalen Baxter has been accepted into the Junior National Young Leaders Conference in Washington, DC this summer. This program provides six days of leadership training, and she was nominated by Mr. Guyress. And then again, state testing for those students. Facet, the amazing shake today. This year-long program involves learning discipline, respect manners, and professional conduct. Please help me if I have the name wrong. Kalani Sanz?
Sanz.
Sanz, okay. Congratulations, Kalani. And the Photo Arts Club at Metro Seacor Park is displaying photos snapped by our art teacher, Mike Kaczynski, and four of his students. That exhibition runs through April 6th. State testing again. And a reminder to everybody that there is a homework help program over there after school. I think we don't mention that enough. From Clay, there's so many sports updates. I suggested you read them in the Clay Chronicle. But here are a couple of things. Our gymnastics junior, Leah Nowak, placed third all-team in the NLL. Junior Xander Kurt was named Hockey Player of the Year in the NLL. And in powerlifting, which is one of our newer sports, the girls' team placed second in the state with our senior Gabby Rivera lifting 200 pounds. And I have trouble lifting five pounds of flour. That's wonderful. She worked really hard to do that. Our spring sports teams are all busy getting it together. Academically speaking, oops, and that is outstanding. Both Clay, thank you. Both Clay and our Career Tech Department have earned the Momentum Award from the state of Ohio for outstanding improvement and achievement for 2024. Model UN placed second in the International Mid-American Model UN Competition. That involved researching 21 world issues, writing 26 position papers, and 23 resolutions. And thank you to Mrs. Wiker for your devoted leadership for doing that all these years. Career Tech, educators rising. In state competition, Emma Martin and Lucy Maybrink placed second. Skylar Munchewitz placed fourth, and Jocelyn Snow received eight rounds. Three of those people will be coming to Nationals in June. BPA, Preston Gibbs earned first place and will go to Nationals in Orlando. In culinary arts, there's a offering of a meat raffle. It's the response for the annual food truck face-off. The winning ticket is drawn March 26th. That goes along with the car show by our auto department. And please participate if you like meat. From our theater arts program, The Sound of Music will be presented in April 11th, 12th, 13th. It's the last play to be directed by Mr. Sneak, who will be resigning from that position as director at the end of the year. Once again, state testing. National Honor Society induction is April 2nd. Prom is April 5th. District-wide, the distinguished Hall of Fame voting is now open. You can do that online. And finally, spring break is on here. But one breaking news. The FFA chapter just received a coveted silver rating from Nationals for developing activities and programs designed to improve growing leaders, building community, and strengthening agriculture. That just happened yesterday. So, congratulations to all these people. Anything further from anybody else? I took most of the meeting, didn't I? Any need for executive session? Okay, meetings. I have a special meeting at noon on the 25th and a regular meeting on April 15th at 6 o'clock. Yes, Mr. Evers?
Yeah, that's standard. Is that the third, the 15th?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's our standard, so.
Right. But I always check in meetings.
No, it's fine, no, I'm, we're all good.
Sometimes you put water in cameras.
Nope, we're all good.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
All right, Mr. Sattick.
Yes.
Mr. Eversman.
Yes.
Mr. Zwizwinski.